Good afternoon, everyone. We'd like to call this Orangeburg County Council Meeting of March the 18th, 2019, to order. We're going to ask Councilman Rabinal to give us a note of thanks before we proceed.
That was my Hayden, brother, prayer. Father God, we want to thank you for allowing us to come together this day to conduct the business of this county. Father God, we want to thank you for government everywhere. Father God, we want to just thank you for the many blessings that you bestowed down upon us throughout the years. Father, as we make the decision or try to make decisions for the best of the citizens that we represent, we ask that you be in this, in Christ name we pray.
Amen. All Beach and every council person have had the opportunity to look at the minutes of the last fourth meeting. And if we have, I would entertain a motion to second that those minutes be received as written.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Frazier, Dolores, and second by Ms. Cooper Smith, that minutes be received as written, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? The ayes have it, the motions carried. Again, we'd like to welcome you to our meetings, and for those of you who, to our meeting, and for those of you who have maybe never attended our meeting, we have a public comment section at the beginning of our meeting. And we have public comments of two areas. The first public comment is on agenda items. That means when I open the floor for public comments, on any agenda item on the agenda, you may come forward. If that agenda item has a public hearing, wait until we get to that item before you come forward, if you want to comment on that particular item, such as the audit, or third reading and public hearing. And that's item number two. The other area is a public comment section for anything you would like to bring before council, you will come up and address council on whatever issue you think you have at that time. The floor is now open for public comment on agenda items. But that's, that's wait until you get to that item.
Thank you.
And just any other agenda items that's not, don't have a public hearing section. If you have a public hearing section, you're welcome. Here, none of you close that and open the floor for public comments on other matters, any other matters. Please state what your matter is and your name for the records, please.
Again, thank you for having me. My name is John A. Snell, S-N-E-L-L. I've appeared before the council several weeks ago concerning my case number 7214. This will ask me because of maybe some of the council people at the time. What happened is I spoke to city administrator, and he said that he spoke with the sheriff about the incident with my trailer, and he apologized. I have not received anything from the sheriff office as of this date in regards to my trailer being stolen, in regards to the officer not showing up, in regards to the victim advocacy office, I have not received anything from the victim advocacy office. I have, right now, I don't have anything in regards to my, the incident that we, I brought up earlier. And the apology is not helping me with my situation. I have not received anything from that, in that regards. And I'm asking council to please help me bring some resolution to this situation, because the only thing I wanted from the sheriff office was a report of why the officer did not show up for the hearing, and my case was thrown out. And I have not got a response from the sheriff office as of this date of why he did not show up. The only thing one officer told me was, it was an internal matter. I need something in writing from them stating why that was not present. That's as a voter, as a taxpayer, and I'm asking council for your help. Please help me bring this to some kind of resolution, because we need answers as a voter and as a taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I followed up with the sheriff, and he said they had several meetings, and he also said that they had apologized to the gentleman, and the information that was sent to me from the sheriff is what I showed him, and that's what he disagrees with. So as far as I was concerned, I talked to them about the case. They said that they had met with him, and they did the investigation, they found out who stole the trailer, got that person arrested. But for some reason, when they had the court date, as he said, the officer didn't show up, so got thrown out. They went back to try to have it re-prosecuted, but it was not, I don't know the legalities behind that, but I know the sheriff office did make an attempt to go back and have it reopened. You would have to seek the sheriff to get clarification on that. But, you know, after that, that's, you know, on my level as county administrator, and your level as elected officials, the sheriff is an elected official that he has to be responsible to this gentleman, so what he has to do is probably seek another meeting with the sheriff and ask for clarification on that in writing, because I think what they were under the impression of after the conversation you guys had, I think they felt like that was the end of it, but you were seeking a apology or some type of explanation in writing, correct, is what you just said, right?
I'm seeking something in writing why the officer wasn't present.
Okay.
And I did not receive that. And also, handling internally doesn't help me with the officer not showing up. That's not, that's not a standard operating, operation procedure for the sheriff office. That if you just tell somebody you're sorry or you're apologizing, what happens after that? That's not, that's not good police, community policing. That's not good sheriff. That's not good policy.
John, did you get, it's my understanding that the trailer was retrieved, did you get it back?
I have not received anything. I, I've contacted the, what we call the task force, recovery task force, and I was told that there, it was not in that bag, in that big raid that they did, it was not present, it was not there. Ms. Cooper, I'm being lied to. I called over there to the victim advocacy office, and it told me that the case was the guy that was on hold. And I said, this guy's going to get out. And I was informed that a whole man, that someone was going to bring him over before his child, he was, he was already locked up for grand larceny, no, he was locked up for strong arm robbery in Burberry, and he was doing time. And he was in whole, uh, making operation, I said, when he got a probation, he's going to get out, he's going to walk. No, we got him in hold. And when I called after the case was over, and I spoke to the officer, he said, no, the case is not over. The case was over. This was a week after.
Mr. Snell, I think we, I appreciate you bringing that back to us, but I think we need to ask administrator to see, I'll have him recall, but, you know, sheriff is an elected official.
Right.
And we can't control his office, you understand, but we will definitely check on it again and see if we can do anything else.
Thank you, Mr. General, right.
Thank you.
But as I, like I say, as a citizen, I just think that you ought to know the way that was, that was treated. That's not.
Any other? If not, we will close the public comment section of our agenda, and we're going to our, to our regular agenda. The first one is a presentation, and a presentation to the industrial product act.
Mr. Chairman, we ask that we move that forward, the individual we represented to had a family emergency, we would like to move forward to that.
Sorry about that. All right, the other was a resolution and audits, the first item on the agenda is a resolution to amend, the amended and restate agreement for development for a joint county industrial park, effective as of May 17th, 2010, between the county of Orangeburg and Dorchester County, providing for the development of a jointly owned and operated industrial business park, so as to include additional properties in the county that are part of the joint industrial park, and other matters related there, too.
Just you or that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, under the state laws, it's allowable for two, um, joint counties to be able to enter in a, a joint county industrial park agreement, and this is for state sort of tax incentives that will be given to industries that are located in that area, and I will yield to the county attorney for different information if required.
I'm telling you that the paperwork is, I can't tell you too much about the underlying transactions. As we're all aware, there's the 99% and the 1%, this is a resolution that if you accept, then the county receives 1% of the fee, the annual tax being paid by this Dorchester company.
Thank you so much, the citizens and council. At night, I would entertain a motion and a second for pass of this resolution.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith, and second by Ms. Dolores Frazier, that we pass the resolution as explained, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposeds? The ayes have it, the motion carried. Item number two is, is an audit, sir, this is the third reading, and a public hearing. And this is the artist amending the chapter 34 of the Orangeburg County Court of Audit regarding solid waste, including violation penalties and other related matters. Could we have, Madam Attorney, can we have a public hearing on this, and somebody, once it's over, if they let a motion, you have to have it a more, a public hearing, more than we need to wait for.
You need to have a public hearing. There was a public hearing that was held the last time council met, but because of a 15-day rule that had to do advertising and changing the meeting to a different time, this is the official public hearing for this, and then it would be third reading after that.
Thank you so much. The floor is now open for a public hearing at this time. One beside.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen and council. My name is Stefan Edwards. I am the president of the Orangeburg, Banburg, Calhoun County Home Builders Association, and I'm here to speak on that particular audit. First of all, we thank you for giving us this opportunity. We have, this has brought to our attention recently at our last meeting, and we have some concerns about this particular audit. We understand the spirit of the ordinance, and we have no problems with that. We just would like a little bit more specificity in this ordinance, so that we're clear on who the violators are and what needs to happen throughout this process. We'd like to be a little bit less subjective, if possible. Don't want one person kind of dictating who's right, who's wrong, if we're a little clear on the ordinance, but we appreciate you taking a closer look at it, would adhere to what have been advised the council has at this point. Thank you so much for hearing us, and also, if you want to speak, sir.
My name's Hugh Hicklin, Island Hicklin Maintenance LLC. We rent dumpsters in Orangeburg County. I would just, I appreciate the interest you've had in this item, and would like for you just to see if you could look at it a little closer, and maybe you could help us out a little bit with some clarity on some terms, and just trying to help have a little bit better understanding of what the requirements are and what we can do going forward to help the county. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hicklin, and thank you, Mr. Edwards. Comments?
Let's sit right here.
Also, you've heard the comments of the gathering. It's time that it's off the third reading, there's your question.
Mr. Chairman, in light of what we've heard this afternoon, I move, we pull upon third reading, and go back to committee for our next regular meeting, and have committee meeting to do some clarification on it. But I would like to mention also, and maybe need to correct, but this is third reading, and any changes or corrections in this ordinance would have to be unanimous by all council members. Is that correct?
That's correct, and we decided to go back and start the process over.
But just want to make that clear, but anyway, I moved, we carried back and maybe do a little more explaining and clarifying exactly what we mean by mixed law, it's very broad in our ordinance, and go back and clarify it a little bit. We pulled upon third reading and go back to committee.
Second.
Move with second, and discussion, you got to decide, right?
Did I hear you correctly, um, you said, um, if the vote has to be unanimous on the next, the third read, if we make changes, that's correct?
If we make changes.
But if not, if you stay like it is, you can vote either way, five, two, or whatever, and still carry.
No, no, it's got to be unanimous.
If we change it, everybody has to vote unanimously.
Change it, yeah. But if we don't change it, it'll be five, two, or whatever, whatever, that's good.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I don't mind going back, but should we change it, I don't want all the teeth taken out of the ordinance. I think I was, I spoke previously about making audiences with no teeth in it, and when you do that, I think you weaken the council. Even I voted to go back, but let's make sure we decide to bring that back and to full citizens of Orangeburg County that we have teeth in, I think that's important.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'm like Mr. Owens, they are, I don't think we need to change nothing or disclarify.
Clarify.
Disclarify, you know, I think, I think everything about where we need to be, but just be sure, you know, we're dealing fine, it's a 300-pound piece of a block, or steel, or 500, or 50 pounds, you know, it's confusing. You get a little more clarity on it, and then go, you know, move over there.
All right. It has been moved by Mr. Remley, and second by Ms. Cooper Smith, I think it was, and we carry this forward back to the committee for, to give a clarification, all in favor of it, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? The ayes have it, the motion is carried. Form of the board and commission committees, here is appointment to the Santify District for District Two, are you to appoint District Two, Mr. Remley?
Chairman and committee, I have Mr. Charles W. Woods, 424 South Carolina, requesting appointment into Santify Commission, move. That is in favor.
Sir. Moved by Mr. Rabinal, and seconded by Mr. Haverlevison, that we appoint Mr. Charles Woods to Fire District, District Two, all in favor of it, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? The ayes have it. B is an appointment to the Orangeburg County Human Relations Council for District Four.
Yes, I'm going to give the last. Mr. Chairman, John H. Bonnet, Jr., 2234 Slatterland Road, Nissas, I would like to call him.
Second.
Okay, the motion by Mr. Haverlevison from District Four to appoint Mr. John H. Bonnet, Jr., and seconded by Mr. Harry Remley for that vote, all in favor of it, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? The ayes have it, the motion is carried. Next item is an update from the Public Health and Safety Committee, I yield to its chairman, Mr. Willie DeOnis.
Mr. Chairman, the Public Health and Safety Committee made the motion for a new audience to transfer class 10 areas and nearby property on the map that was granted by the city and county fire departments.
Motion.
That's a motion, sir.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Willie DeOnis, and seconded by Mr. Haverlevison.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to clear a little bit about.
Okay, well, I'm getting a motion and seconding, and I'll let you, on that motion, go ahead.
It comes to our attention that, in our process of working with the city and forming a fire district around the five-mile area of the city, that when two fire departments, the city and the county, got together, they came up with some class 10 areas around the edge of the city, where the people were receiving fire readings and class ratings to the city, and now that they identified as class 10, some insurance companies that keyed in on this, and these folks in this area's insurance premium has increased plastic, some folks are dumb, but yet they within two or three miles of a, of a county fire department, but over five miles from a city fire department. So in an effort to help these citizens get back to a class rating that what the county has at least five, four or five in that area, we are working off the map that was drafted and put together by Fire Chief of City Orangeburg and Fire Commission of Orangeburg County to identify these areas, so now we are in the process of pulling an ordinance that we can pull these class 10 areas back into the county, and therefore these folks can get a reduced insurance premium, plus they'll be within a five-mile area of a fire department.
Mr. Chairman, may I add, it will also provide that no person will get a 10 rating for their house, but two.
That's the purpose of this ordinance. This has nothing to do with the ordinance, we're working right now with the city in creating a fire district around the city, and work with the city being part of the Orangeburg County Fire System. All this is doing is trying to get these 10, class 10 areas into an area where they can get a better fire rating and get insurance reduced.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Owens, and thank you, Mr. Remley, for explaining that, so that everybody don't get, make sure that when they pick up a paper, they don't look at something and draw on attention, so. It was moved in second, have been moved in second, moved by Mr. Owens, and seconded by Mr. Haverlevison. So all in favor of that motion, that we move forward as trying to have that as an audit, is qualified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? The ayes have it. Next is a report from the Public Works Committee, I yield to its chairperson, Mr. John Rabinal.
Chairman and council, we had four items on our agenda, and we had a long discussion. And the first one was trying to come up with ways to recruit damage for, funding for damage, when you have construction crews such as lawyers, or even people that who are installing these solar systems. Came up with a draft of a revolution, and we pretty much have it intact. And it was put in place that we was recommending that it was to be like a $10,000 speed to go into a, I want to say a pot.
Security bomb.
A security bomb. And out of that, if the road be damaged, we have the monies in place to draw from to repair the road. It may cost more or less, but we have that in place, that's stuff. That's one of the recommendations coming from the Public Works Committee. That is a form of a motion.
Second.
That, that, that's why that, that's starting the motion to start the order, so that.
Yes, start.
It has been moved and seconded, moved by Mr. Rabinal, Public Works Committee, chairperson, and seconded by Mr. Willie DeOnis, that we take that as a motion, so that we will start the process of putting that on the agenda as an ordinance to be passed by council. All in favor of it, maybe not, by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? The ayes have it, the motion is carried.
Second item, that the convenience site, that is recommended that we install security cameras for surveillance, and kind of take, keep a watch at the thing that goes around the convenience site, and this is just a recommendation, Mr. Henry Summers, and individuals that works at the convenience sites, they're probably going to come up with a grant, phone a grant to secure some funding for cameras in that, to, so these cameras secure, and that's just a recommendation, that's, that's not, we voted on. Third, on our agenda was discussion about Nell's Road, it wanted to, some individuals wanted to have it closed, but we decided to take some precautionary measures, so far as having Mr. Allison, Bill Allison, to, to the G.I.S., to identify how long we've been maintaining the road, and et cetera, but as a committee, we've voted to let it stay open as standing, be acceptable in being that as a form of a motion as well.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Moved by Mr. Rabinal, and chairperson of the Public Works, and seconded by Mr. Haverlevison, one of the committee persons for that, that we continue to maintain the road as we usually do on Nell's Road, all in favor of it, please, maybe not, by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? The ayes have it, the motion is carried.
And the fourth item on the agenda was, we had, county bridge had been inspected, and we came up with the recommendation that we'll continue to have the traffic on this road as usual.
At the end of your proposal?
Yes, sir.
We didn't make disposition, Mr. Chairman, of the, one point to say, after cameras.
What we did was, we gave the green light for the Public Works director to go ahead on and look into, see if they can come up with a grant to get that done. Just give them to come back with more information on that, and that, you know, the way they got the green light to go ahead on, see if they can sue next, see if they can get those cameras there.
Yes, sir, and I think we need to inform the public, now just because you're on public property, it does not mean that you don't need to be careful, because if you fall, it's not always our responsibility. You can't take responsibility for people who try to slip when they shouldn't be slipping. Make sure you do due diligence and take care when you're trying to dump your garbage and other material in our dumpster, in the public side.
This time, we would like a vote for executive session, and executive session on the economic development update for five projects, OCCIP update, QM group update, Project Ola update, Project Lion update, Project Huntley update, the motion, and we go into executive session for those items.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Owens, and seconded by Ms. Frazier, that we go into executive session for the following items, that has been listed. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? The ayes have it, the motion is carried. Before we ask for adjournment, any personnel, any council personnel?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment from the council.
Any comment from the council? If not, Mr. Administrator, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman and council, I just, I think we need to recognize, over the weekend, we had a lot of wrecks and different situations that taxed our first responders a whole lot, and I'm proud to say that many women of our volunteer fire department, our emergency services, our medical emergency services, as well as the sheriff's department, and public safety with the city of Orangeburg, did a hell of a job, to number one, worked fires at Corona, the accidents on I-95, the accidents on the North Road. We had a lot of major incidents that stretched our capabilities to the limit, but we had the equipment, the manpower, and the training, and the willing volunteer. volunteers to be able to work with the citizens, uh, which I could say there were no fatalities throughout those times, but there were, but at the same time, um, those men and women did what they did and saved a lot of other lives as well, so, uh, just like the committee because our, our system is filled with volunteers on both sides, so we need to make sure that regardless of whether it's a volunteer on the, uh, side of the firefighters or the reserve deputies, or anybody who was called in to do it on these times, um, it's good to know that you as council has done your job as being able to fund the county so that we have the instruments, the apparatuses, and the training, um, that they need to be able to do their job. Thank you.
Mr. Young, I heard a loud boom, nobody can explain to me where that loud boom came from, did we have an explosion or anything in the country?
That was the boom that came from the fire at Corona Apartments, where you live at, you probably heard that.
I went out there, but, but people out there couldn't, they heard the boom in the way it came from.
Well, they're still investigating, but, um, they pretty much, um, that's the consensus of what everybody heard, the boom and then the fires started, so it's being investigated, um, uh, I think state office and, uh, public safety wanted to.
Thank you.
Where, where are the people that, um, whose apartments were, the tenant, the rent tenants, whose apartments were there?
The Red Cross is working with them, um, in some cases, some of them stay with family, and I think Red Cross issued some, um, vouchers or whatever to some hotels or whatever for a limited basis, but the, you know, I'm glad to say, the apartment manager and the owner situation, they were out there on hand and they did not duck or share from their responsibilities, so I'm sure they'll be filing the insurance claims and things of that nature, but, um, for a person, for, for public information though, living in apartment and public housing or whatever, your personal contents have to be insured by yourself.
That's true.
Under a personal policy, because once something like that happens, the owner will get, they will get reimbursed for the building, but your contents have to be insured separately by yourself, so hopefully, uh, most of them were insured, but if not, um, they will seek assistance through the Red Cross and the Salvation Army, who are doing great partners for us.
Thank you, I just want to reemphasize one thing, we'll be working on our budget in a couple of weeks, Red, American Red Cross is what I heard, guys, y'all remember that.
And Salvation Army.
And Salvation Army.
I'd like to say, um, I'm not trying to advertise my business, but, um, I do a, a tour service, I work the interstate I-95 a lot of the times, and Lord knows, this past weekend, I seen a lot of accidents out there, and when I say that I seen a lot of accident, I mean, there was a lot of care to that, uh, people, uh, driving, I mean, furious, I mean, eighty, eighty-five and ninety mile hours on the interstate patrol, and, um, said he caught the guy on the opposite side of the road driving a hundred, over a hundred, and, uh, he said, "Well, they don't need to go after him because he would never catch me, be happy out of the county by the time, uh, he tried to pursue him," but nevertheless, uh, I witnessed one fatality, uh, on Friday night, I think it was, three major accident this past weekend, and all of it came from carelessness, for what I see, not the judge nor the juror, but, uh, worst of all, we need to slow down some, we need to slow down, people just take, uh, and buy these little cars, they're airtight, and I said, "Airtight like you sit in your front room," and you, you, you think you're not driving that way speed, but you're driving a speed of eight and ninety, ninety-five miles an hour, and if you were to hit something, that car is going to explode, and some bad things are gonna happen because of it, that's what I've been witnessing out there now, so, tell your loved ones, and I, I know we in this room, we kind of seasoning the things, we don't do that, but these are mostly young people who are out there, uh, driving as such, just want to inform you of that, thank you.
Report, get out of town.
Thank you, Mr. Ravenel, that's it.
I sit like, I sit like this, and I quit, I, I tell people all the time, I said, "I'm, I'm about to fill an hole, man," I said, "I'm gonna be sitting by the phone waiting for somebody to die, but somebody have an accident, I'm there."
I get you, I get you. All right, any other comments on that one?
Two-way road, yellow lines, people don't pay those yellow lights any attention, just drive, could be going up a hill, I've seen some close accidents, unavowed, they're unavowed of them, but, um, people just don't, they're not, they're not, they just don't care, don't think they can get in the next.
Too big of a herd.
More cars, more cars, more people, more...
More accidents, that's good.
All right, well, thank you all for your input, and, uh, again, thank each and every one of you for coming out, and, uh, echo what Mr. Young said, thank all of the first responders and all the firemen and all the, all the, all the people that works these kind of situations voluntarily of their own time, we really appreciate, but how motion and second that we adjourned. Second. My Ms. Frazier is seconded by Mr. Owens, that we adjourned, thank you for coming.